Okay, we're ready?
Okay, we need roll call.
Mr. Pavlik? Commissioner Kern? Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Caliendo?
Here.
Rosberg.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Here.
Commissioner Burke?
Here.
Commissioner Brumfield? Commissioner Beatty?
Here.
Commissioner Sowers?
Here.
We have quorum.
We're right at quorum.
I know, I was looking, I was counting, I was counting. Okay, if we can please stand for our opening prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our county. Help us to listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on those matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds open and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments charitable. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at 9:00 AM in the Vista Center, Ken Rogers Hearing Room, VC-1W-47, 2300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, to consider applications for official zoning map amendments, planned developments, conditional uses, development order amendments, type two variances, and other actions permitted by the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code, and to hear the recommendations of staff on these matters. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and type two variances, and issues advisory recommendations on accepting, rejecting, or modifying the recommendations of staff regarding other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing at 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, Florida, in the Jane M. Thompson Memorial Chambers, sixth floor, at 9:30 AM. Hold on. That's right. On Monday, November 28th, 2022, to take final action. Just one moment, please. The date is incorrect on here. No. It's not January 11th, it's going to be December something. They're not convening in December?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just going to reread that sentence. "The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing at 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, Florida, in the Jane M. Thompson Memorial Chambers, sixth floor, at 9:30 AM on Monday, January 11th, 2023, to take final action on the applications listed below regarding official zoning map amendments, rezoning, Class A conditional uses, requested uses, planned developments, development order amendments, waiver requests, and administrative inquiries." Zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties' due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures for conduct of quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following requirements. Any communication with commissioners which occurs outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communications made a part of the record at the hearing. Any person representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions, to the chair who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. Do we have proof of publication?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair.
May I make a motion?
Do I have a second? Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you swearing in, please?
Will all those wishing to speak on items before the board today please stand, please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can I get approval of the minutes, please?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Kellyendo, sorry, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Amendments to the agenda?
Before you, we do have amendments to our agenda. Starting on page one, we have an amended motion for George Parker rezoning. That motion needs to include a caption that it is subject to the conditions indicated in Exhibit C. Item number two has several modifications for Whitworth PUD, where we're deleting conditions from Exhibit C1, and modifying and deleting conditions, renumbering on Exhibit C2. I also want to note, item number five, DOA W20211652, which is the public storage military, staff is working with the agent onsite design condition number five that has to do with open space and parking, so we'll be working with them between now and BCC. I do know that you have some cards, I believe, on item number...
Four.
Yeah. And if you want to pull that from consent, you can include that as part of your motion as well.
Yeah, yeah, we were noticing that we did have a number that now we feel it is necessary to pull item number four from consent to regular agenda. We also do have a card on number two, it's not necessary to remove it from consent, they just would like it to be submitted, okay, into the record.
Madam Chair, move to pull item number four from the consent agenda, move it to the regular agenda.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Beatty, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
And then the motion for the adoption of the amended agenda?
Move to adopt the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Caliendo, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Can I, all right.
Okay.
Any disclosures?
No.
No.
No disclosures.
Okay. All right, and...
Any conflicts or recusals? No?
No.
Okay.
No conflicts.
Okay.
All right.
So that'll bring us to the consent agenda. And you said one card on number two, so I don't know if you would like to hear from that person at this time?
Actually, it was an email or letter that was sent and asked that we read it into the record, so... Madam Chair, read it into the record?
Yes.
"I have lived in Boynton Beach for about nine years, and every time I see the sign 'Agricultural Reserve' on Lines Road, I laugh to myself, or with others in our community and area, about the entire concept wherein nothing is reserved at all. It's a shame that the spirit of the agricultural reserve is completely ignored in the zoning application deliberations. Trading land in some far reaches of the county for land in our area does not meet the spirit of the reducing population density of our area. Why not ask the developer, GL Homes in this case, to purchase adjacent property and create park-like, replicating Watahachi or Green Kay? That would be in the spirit of the agricultural reserve and greatly benefit the county and the immediate area. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend the hearing on December 1st. I hope you will be able to read my note."
Okay.
Okay. So with item number four pulled from consent, any motion on the consent agenda would be for items one, two, three, and five.
Madam Chair, make a motion to accept those items.
Second.
Motion?
As amended.
As amended.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough, to accept the amended agenda. All those in favor?
To approve.
To approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that brings us to our...
Yes.
Item number four.
Item number four is the Southern Boulevard Industrial. The request before the board is a development order amendment and a Class A conditional use. The staff report is found as number four in the packet. Staff is recommending approval of both of the requests, and it is to be noted that the variance and the weavers were withdrawn due to staff interpretation of the codes. It's not necessary.
Turn it over to the agent if you want to do a presentation?
Thank you, Wendy, appreciate it. For the record, Josh Nichols, Wishmet Nichols, and we're the agent for the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Nichols, if there is, you don't have to have the full presentation, if you that's to be okay?
Okay, I'll kind of truncate it a little bit, but I think there's going to be some points made by the public. We started seeing some emails come as early as this morning, so we're trying to get ahead of that, so I want to just go over some points.
All right, no problem. And of course, as you would have the opportunity to, if you had any other questions for them after they spoke.
Appreciate it, thank you. So again, this is the Southern Boulevard Industrial Center, and we'll go through some of our, the formal requests are a DOA, so this does have an existing approval on the books, so it does have a conditional overlay zone, so we are amending that, which triggers the DOA, and we have a Class A conditional use because we do exceed the 100,000 square feet, only by about 2,000 square feet, but moving forward, so this is, so I think what's most important as the public gets up to discuss the project is the location. So this is on the north side of Southern Boulevard. Southern Boulevard, as we all know, is one of the largest east-west arterial roads within the county. 220-foot ultimate right-of-way, six-lane divided highway. So we are on the north side of Southern Boulevard, and as you can see, the nearest residential homes to the south are across that 220-foot right-of-way, across the C-51 canal, and we also are required to dedicate an additional 63 feet for DOT for that expansion of Southern Boulevard. So this is the proposed site plan, we have 102,000 square feet, it's oriented north-south with the loading areas facing towards the east. One of the big points I wanted to make too on this is that we've restricted all truck traffic to only Wallace, so there will not be semi-trucks or any other truck traffic coming in off of Southern Boulevard. They cannot get to that loading area from Southern. So as you can see, does this have a laser on it? So as you can see, this access point here, which does have a turn lane required by DOT, this turn lane provides access to all of the passenger vehicle spaces, so there will be no truck traffic, and then that pushes you out onto Wallace, so that's kind of a pass-through, and just for passenger vehicles. The only truck traffic comes in off of Wallace Road, comes down, they have to turn around and exit back onto Wallace. So I think that's an important piece of what you're going to hear. Also, here's the 63 feet of dedication along Southern Boulevard to get that 220-foot ultimate right-of-way. Again, another important fact to point out is that it does have an approval on the books. This is an industrial warehouse project that's previously approved for approximately 90,000 square feet. So again, we're reconfiguring the plan, creating one building versus the four buildings, and same use. And this, this plan has only, all the traffic comes from Southern, so all the truck traffic, all the passenger vehicles, all come from Southern in this currently-on-the-books plan. Again, existing future land use, this project is surrounded entirely by industrial. It's utilized on your east by Big D Paving Company. On the west is outdoor storage, and to the west of that is storage. The project immediately to the west is actually in for self-service storage right now. To the north, you have other industrial, so it's surrounded by industrial development. Again, the zoning, you do see some RS to the east there, but that's an antiquated zoning that should really be changed, they just haven't come in to do that yet, but it is used for other means than residential. So here's, I think this is probably the most important slide, and some of the discussion is how close it is to the residential. Again, we're on the north side of Southern, we have a 43-foot building setback from our property line, 64 feet of right-of-way dedication, 157 foot of existing right-of-way, 225-foot canal, and 115 feet there to the back of the single-family dwellings. So it's a total of 600 feet. I don't think that we're going to be generating any noise that wouldn't already be there from Southern Boulevard. Again, I know some of the discussion was about recycling centers that were working overnight or things like that, but again, this is a warehouse building that all activity happens inside the building. There's no outdoor forklifts, there's no outdoor crunch, you know, recycling machinery, anything like that, this is a very quiet use, and so I don't anticipate any additional noise than what already comes from Southern Boulevard. So again, staff recommendation of approval on the DOA and the conditional use, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Would you like a staff presentation?
Yep.
Short.
Just for the record, yeah.
Just for the record, we'll try and make it short and sweet. My name is Donna Adelsberger, I'm with the zoning division, I'm the project manager for this site. The site is on the north side of Southern Boulevard, approximately a half-mile west of Jog Road. The future land use is commercial high with an underlying industrial. The existing zoning is industrial, and as Josh stated, it does have a conditional overlay zone from where it was originally rezoned. The site is 6.9 acres. They are asking for a development order amendment to reconfigure the site plan, to add square footage, add a use, add access points, which would be to Wallace Road, because they're not currently approved for that, and to modify or delete conditions within the conditional overlay zone. And they're also asking for a Class A conditional use to exceed 100,000 square feet for the warehouse use. So, as is indicated, the development order is to reconfigure the plan, add square footage, modify, delete conditions, add an access point, add a use, and then the Class A. The site plan shows a 91,464-square-foot warehouse with an 11,300 square feet of accessory office for a total of 102,769 square feet. One access point from Southern Boulevard, which is currently approved, and two proposed access points from Wallace Road. At the time of publication, staff had not received any contact from the public, however, since we did publication, I had received one email from a property owner to the south of Southern Boulevard. They had concern with the noise of the vehicles entering and leaving from the site, as well as the proposed 24-hour operation. Staff is recommending approval of the development order amendment, subject to the conditions as indicated in C1, and approval of the Class A conditional use, subject to the conditions as indicated in C2.
We also got, we do have two more emails from this morning as well.
I do have a letter that was handed to me by an individual that is here, they asked that we read it for, one of the email that was referenced in my comments, from Charlene Decourt, and she's in receipt of our notice for the proposed zoning application. She resides at 6715 Wallace Road, has been there since 1999. The following are my explanations of why I firmly disagree with this zoning application and all of the requests included in the notice sent to her. "In 2005, 2006, when Southern Boulevard was under construction to widen the road, I heard trucks, forklifts, power jacks, and vehicle backup beeping noises all night long. I called the county to complain, thinking it was road construction, and a very nice gentleman assured me they were not working at night, so that evening I got my car at approximately 3:00 in the morning and drove to Southern Boulevard and followed the noise. She found that it was the recycling center on Wallace Road, so recorded the noise and called back the county to apologize to the gentleman, and he told her that the recycling facility did not have permission to operate for a third shift. If you look at the attached pictures that were in her email, they show the distance from her house to the recycling facility, which is north of Wallace Road, you will see that is further away from the property on the current zoning application. Even at that distance, it was very disruptive to the people in our home. Now added to my household is a child with autism and a sensory processing disorder. She is a very light sleeper and cannot handle the high-pitched or loud noises as they cause her severe distress. The distress from this can cause her to hold her ears, cry, and have self-injurious behaviors, and become aggressive toward others. She loves being outside in her yard, swimming, going on the trampoline, and playing ball. We try to plan these activities around times when airplanes are not flying over the house, but with what is proposed, there will be no safe time for her to be outside at her own house. It's going to be crowded, and loud noises for the mentioned items is not an option for us. Placing a warehouse that would be open 24 hours would be extremely unfair and even harmful to some of the residents residing on Wilson Road. Our porch, pool, and backyard and bedroom are on the south side of her home, we would have to listen to the warehouse noise around the clock, and her daughter would be a total wreck. She's asking that this application be denied, as this is literally across the street from her house."
Then we received...
You don't have to read these, in the record.
These can be submitted and filed with the clerk.
Thank you. Okay, all right. At this time, we do have some comments. If some public that is here would like to speak?
So, these comments, when I call your name, come up to the podium and be reminded that you have two minutes to speak, and if you, we would appreciate if you don't repeat what somebody else has already stated. So with that being said, Glenn Moody, if you want to come up to the podium, and then it'll be Jack Swirl. And when you come up here, state your name and address, please, for the record. That's fine. And Jack, if you want to come to the other podium?
Yes, my name is Glenn Moody, I live on Wilson Road, and I really object to this coming through. If you look at the map, it's the only green space on that side of Southern, and we were, I've been here since 73 on this property on Wilson, and we were never notified of the recycling facility going in, which I think it has quieted down, probably because of that woman complaining, but they would go, sometimes they'd open up at 4:00 in the morning, and anyway, it's, the other point was the pollution, I don't know if anybody's talked about that yet, the pollution of just trucks running over there, and we have so much as it is, and anyway, that's, those are my concerns, and of course, the noise. So, and I was, we weren't notified of this, I was just notified by the neighborhood group, so I don't know, that's another objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swirl?
Yeah, it's actually swing, but I...
I'm sorry.
No, I like that one better.
There you go.
Yeah. What was that, squirrel?
Swirl, now you've got to go change your driver's license. And your deed.
Oh, yeah, I'll do it, that's a good name. Anyway, we've been living out on Possum Pass, which is about a mile and a quarter in, and if you go due north on it, you hit the Turnpike Overpass, and we've been out there since 85, and we've watched the whole area just grow immensely with the traffic, Jog Road and Southern, and the airplanes, and sometimes when the traffic goes over the bridge there, I mean, it sounds like it's in my backyard, and so I'm all in favor of trying to keep it as quiet as you can, and if I'm understanding this right, I was under the impression that the applicant was trying not to put in some landscaping and buffering for purposes of sound. That's, I reckon, that's my biggest objection, and I mean, literally, it's just, to me, it's just one of the things that makes our area nice, is getting to be less and less peace and quiet, but it's one of those things, it's nice to be able to go outside at night and maybe hear a cricket instead of all sorts of other stuff, but, so I appreciate whatever landscaping can be done, put in, to really help mitigate that, that's my biggest concern, is just the sound.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Jeff Liebowitz, and then Ned Karas? I apologize on your names. When you come up to the podium, if you'll state your name correctly and your address, please.
You stated it correctly, Jeff Liebowitz. My address is 6963 Wilson Road, I am immediately south of the intersection of Southern and Cleary. We have had a lot of noise issues. Keep in mind, I grew up in New York, I had an apartment on 56th and Lexington for many years. I am not a stranger to noise, and I'm okay with a certain level of noise, but there have been situations that facilities further away than this facility will be from my house have caused significant noise and distress at all hours of the night and the morning. Commissioner Weiss's office was actually very helpful in resolving one of those problems. I'd like to not have another problem similar to that. One of my other concerns is the mention of, I think, a 60-foot or so give-back for the expansion of Southern Boulevard. I think the ultimate solution would really be to have a sound wall along Southern Boulevard from at least Jog Road to the Turnpike. That would help mitigate a lot of our whole area's concerns about many things that are related to these kinds of expansions. I don't want to stop progress, I realize that the area is industrially zoned, and that's fine, but when noises, especially high-pitched noises, like backups for trucks, come across Southern and C-51 Canal, it really is very loud and disturbing, and, you know, we don't mind some level of noise, we have the planes flying over from time to time, and we're okay with that, and we're used to that, but the noise on Southern, I've only been there five years compared to the people who have been here since the 70s and 80s, but even in just the five years, it has dramatically increased and become fairly constant, especially during rush hours, of course, but now even at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, it's quite noisy, especially because I live across from an intersection at Cleary and Southern. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Ned?
Yes, good morning, my name is Ned Kerr, I live at 348 Possum Pass, and I'm kind of curious about the conditions that they want to waive. Are there certain conditions that they're trying to avoid building on this site that are already part of the county code, is that my understanding? Including a sound wall and some landscaping? Am I allowed to ask the staff that question?
Yes, of course. Snaf? I can't respond to the sound wall issue, but on the west property line, or the east property line, they were originally requesting a variance for a single-family use, which does not exist, it's non-residential, so the variance for the buffer reduction wasn't necessary, it's non-residential use, and they also had asked for an hours of operation waiver because of a residential use, which the residential use does not exist, so...
I was under the impression that the property to the east is owned by the DOT for water detention. I don't think, is that map right? I don't think that extra parcel...
It's the northern, the northern lots, the northern lots on the east property line, the northern...
Oh, the northern lot, yes, yes, but the two pieces at the bottom along Southern Boulevard are owned by DOT.
Right, that would be non-residential use, so they don't need hours of operation from a water body or non-residential uses.
Right, but that's one of the reasons that that noise transfer goes all the way across, because they'll never be developed, there'll be landscape, never be anything, and just like the canal, I mean, water crosses, you know, there's nothing that's not noise.
They'll still have a landscape buffer along that property line, it'll be a compatible buffer, but we don't...
But there'd be no noise wall?
We don't, zoning does not require noise walls, so that would be a DOT thing if DOT required a wall in that location.
Okay, well, I guess then it's the 24-hour operation that's going to create the noise that everybody objects to, because noise during the daytime seems to kind of go away and is part of the normal course of living, et cetera, but once you settle in at 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock at night and go through, you know, until you wake up in the morning, that beeping, beeping, beeping just drive you nuts, and with the canal, it'll never go away.
Like our beeping, 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 you're done?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next is Cliff. Cliff, if you'll state your name, first, last name, and your address, please.
My name's Clifford...
My name's Clifford Fort. I live at 161 Elaine Road. I'm a former president of the Pioneer Road Property Owners Association. I'm here representing members of the Pioneer Road Property Owners Association today. And we know Josh. We think Josh is a very reasonable fellow. The thing that just is driving all my neighbors nuts is the fact that we are going to be sentenced to untenable tortures, round the clock beeping. And I can't believe that no one's going, wait a minute, there's 31 bays. How many trucks? I, I don't know if you can disconnect that beeping. But if you're in our neighborhood, which was recognized as rural enclave because of all the stuff that we've done, we've set precedents in terms of protecting the environment. We just have a house that sold for $2.4 million sitting on that canal, and that poor guy's 100% disabled. Why did he buy there? Because it's quiet. And nobody is asking that developer, what is he going to do as a developer, and a reasonable developer, it appears, to mitigate that sound? It's going to cause my property values to drop like a lead kite. That's unreasonable. And I can assure everyone that our association will fight this like blazes, because we need relief. His, the other compromises, I think, are extremely reasonable. The sound, we can't live with it. So I don't know whose jurisdiction it's in, but it's a descent for us. It'll drive us nuts. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Christina Gray?
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Christina Gray, and I live at 6561 Wilson Road. I'm a past member of the PRPOA and a resident of the community for seven years. I'm one of the few who received this zoning letter because it only goes to those within 500 feet of this project. Yet, this will affect many people on my street, further south, as well as the new development right next to me, Solcera West, and their 50-plus beautiful homes. There are residential communities to the east as well as two residents within 200 feet. The stick map was misleading as well. To have a truck depot running 24 hours and wanting a variance to remove sound barriers as well shows that there's no regard for residential space. The incessant beep of backup alarms at all hours, at night, when most of the other sounds have died down and when trucks do most work. Backup beepers have been criticized by the public and its scientific literature. Beepers are near the top of the list of complaints to government and road builders about road construction noise. There's published concerns that due to desensitization, people tend to disregard ever-present alarm sounds, diminishing their effectiveness. The typical 1,000 beeps at 97 to 117 decibels exceeds the long-term hearing loss threshold of 70 decibels. Brains do not adapt to the repetitive and persistent sound of backup beepers and have evolved to process natural sounds that dissipate. The sound is perceived as irritating or painful, which breaks concentration. In some countries, backup systems are made with white noise, which the noise is more audible than the monotone beeping over background noise. Please reconsider and deny these variances and rethink this 24-hour noise pollution that will have an awful effect on many of your residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I turn this in?
Next, and these folks don't want to speak, so I'm just going to read your name and whether you support or oppose. William Payton is opposed. Juliana Roach is opposed. Steve Hanson is opposed. And we also got a letter, Barbara Reed, who is opposed. So thank you. That concludes the public comment.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question of Josh?
Yes.
Josh, just a quick question. Is there a reason you can't put some kind of timeline on this property instead of 24 hours?
Well, I, I think the, the quick answer to that is, is no, because we, again, this is a national, Duke Realty is a national company that gets national tenants, right? So they need to have that flexibility. They don't know who's coming in here yet, so we need to have that flexibility. The, the longer answer is that currently, right now, on the books is 90,000 square feet of industrial that can operate 24/7. So, and, and the same with every other property along this stretch. So we'd be taking away the opportunity that everyone else has and the current plan has on the property.
One other, just, just throwing out ballpark ideas, that's all.
Understood.
I understand what you're saying, and yes, I respect the fact of what's there and what's, what the existing zoning has already in place. But what about, and I think you're going to see more and more of this, the fire departments are using it and everything else doing with a, with a laser flashing scenario and backing up. And a lot of trucks are now putting in, and you, you could require it.
I'm, I'm okay with some type of technology like that, that, you know...
For a certain hour.
Absolutely. And I don't even, I don't think, I, I don't have this factual, but I don't think semi-trucks have a backup beep. I think that's more like the Amazon trucks. I mean, if someone knows better, correct me, but I don't think semis actually have that.
No, they do.
They do have that? Okay.
Yeah, they do. But, but, but a lot of them, front of mine owns American Van Lines, and his trucks all have laser things because they go into residential areas. So what would be the hardship here?
No, I'm, I'm fine with that after a certain hour, that we, you know, either they don't have the beep, or we change to some other technology. I'm fine with that. But they need to have that opportunity to, to...
Well, I think that would resolve the issues that I think most prominently heard here today.
Agreed.
I don't know. You know, regarding the beep, I, I'm sure it's required by their insurance company.
Or laser.
Or, or laser. But I do know that when the semis back up, they do beep. But probably another issue is that the semis sit there and they idle, especially in the middle of the night. That's a loud hum all night long. I can't believe that, that who's developing this doesn't know who the tenant is.
It's, well, it's one of those chicken and the egg, because you can't, you can't market it until you have an approval in place. So until they have that approval, that's when they can start to market it. But until that, they, they don't have that ability.
So why do they need the additional square footage if they have no idea who's going to occupy this?
So their, yeah, I mean, their goal as, as an industrial developer is a long-term play. So they need to get as much square footage that can fit on the property to be able to maximize that. Because they don't know, again, they don't know what tenant will be there, and they need to maximize that.
What about the option of some type of sound barrier on that side of the site?
So we, we do have already, by condition of approval, we do have a berm requirement and additional landscape along the south and as well as the north side. So we do have that put in place. Beyond that...
How tall?
It's a two-to-three-foot undulating berm with landscape on top of that. But again, we're, we're set back 600 feet from, you know, we're across, we're across a highway, across the canal. There's a, there's a huge expanse that we typically don't see, that type of separation. And again, there, all the other sites along Southern are all industrial as well with the similar...
But are they 24/7?
They have the ability to be. I don't know that they all are or aren't, but they have the ability to be based on...
What about enhancing that landscape and raising the berm a little bit?
So, we've looked at that with the engineers. We can't increase the berm height because we have 20 feet to work with, and then we get into our dried detention. We can't increase the berm height, but we could look at increased, you know, another, a higher hedge or something within that, within that area.
What's the plan landscaping now?
The landscape now has the three tiers, the typical, the typical tiers of landscape for a right-of-way buffer. The trees. And then we've at, the, the condition says, basically pushes the, the spacing together a bit. So that's what it's doing. But the hedge is going to do more than the trees, in my opinion, in terms of sound, right? So if we put a six- or eight-foot hedge in there, that would help more with the sound than trees.
What type of hedge?
Either clusia, you know, something that's thick. We did that on the Amazon building over on Turnpike Crossing.
What about some big trees, though? You say they don't. Big trees do have, I mean, I defer to Mark, but, and, and Bob, but I think that big trees do have a lot to do with buffering. I don't mean little trees. Big trees. If you go along Glaze Road and you see it between Glaze and the residence that are there, those big trees, man, they just knock it out.
Yeah, I mean, again, you can only get a certain size tree to start off with, so it's going to take some grow, grow in. Sorry, Mark.
I think, yeah, that's, that's also walled through there, isn't it? Yeah, that's true. Yeah, so you got a wall, you got a six-foot wall there landscaping, and then you've got the trees that are up. But we also have the near, what Josh is saying, fairness, is there's 600 feet to the nearest property. So all I'm trying to say is, to help hedge that a little bit, hedge of biggest material we can get in there would help relieve some of that situation. Plus, the 600 feet should be more than adequate, because everything along that highway is wide open.
So Josh, can they put in the land, the berm and the landscaping prior to anything else that way? It gives, while you're developing that or building that, it gives a time to grow so that when you do start up, the clusia or the trees, whatever is going in there, will be somewhat mature. I mean, the clusi, I know, grow to...
Yeah, it'll grow 12 feet if you let it.
12 feet within six, eight months, so.
Yeah, absolutely. As long, yeah, I don't, I don't see an issue with that. There's some earthwork that happens there with dried detention, but we can install as much as possible within, at least get those trees growing so we get the grow-in period there. Absolutely.
Can you bring the site plan back up?
I mean, actually, there's already a lot of trees on that property. Why not leave those trees that are about Southern?
Where, I have to see, can you, oh, go back to the...
Yeah, go back to that side.
So the trees that are within that first 63 feet have to be removed, because that's the right-of-way dedication area, so those will be...
Oh, okay.
And then a turn lane goes in. And a lot of, to be honest, most of those trees are invasive and they have to be removed, so.
Okay. I don't have anything else. Okay, so that takes care of the trees.
Did you hear that site plan you could put back up there? What's the setback, Josh, off that 63-foot right-of-way?
43 feet.
43 feet.
So you've got a hundred, plus 100 feet from the current property line.
Well, I would like to see you enhance something on the front of that, front of that building. You're getting some variances here, right, for some extra square footage?
No, we, we don't actually have any variances or the waiver for the hours. Those were, those were eliminated.
What about the extra square footage? Didn't they say you're getting...
That, that's a conditional use. So anything over 100,000 square feet and industrial requires a conditional use. So we're 102,000.
Okay, so you're getting a little something there, extra. Maybe you could, like, give back a little bit to the neighbors, is what I'm trying to make a point out of there.
Understood, understood.
Hey, Josh, looking at this site plan, something that may help is the passenger cars are not the concern. The concern are all the loading bays to the east. What if you put a wall, a continued wall, that's parallel to the building where the dumpster is, and created a sound wall in that parking lot area? So going from the building corner to the, to the east property line.
So I should have mentioned that? It's actually required. There is a wall right here that goes, that connects from the edge of the building out by the dumpster. There is, there is a wall.
And you, and you keep it going because there's no access. Can you keep it going to the east?
It would go all the way through the drive aisle, too, because the code requires the loading and the maneuvering area to be screened. So, yeah.
So it would have to go around, we have it stopping here, but it, what you're saying is around the dumpster and then crossing over here.
Correct, correct. Because that's where the sound's coming from, right?
Yes, agreed.
And if you add that with the chain, you know, with the technology, I think that would, because the biggest concern is sound here. And I think, I think those two items would help out tremendously.
And they make sound panels for those walls. They use them around outdoor AC equipment. So maybe we could put that in, as a condition, that they do add some type of acoustical sound panels on the, on the north side of that wall to help control. As well as some technology after hours. And we need to develop what the after hours are.
Yeah, I think...
After nine o'clock?
I guess I'd rather a little bit later, because I'm not...
But that's about as far as I think people are going to be awake. Technology as far as what? Meaning, meaning instead of beepers, they got laser. And then after 10 o'clock, they can't use beepers. They just use lasers all the time.
Well...
Right, I mean, they're not going to modify, change that. It's going to be...
Yeah, and, and maybe not specify the technology, because I don't, if it's in a condition, then we're locked into that. And I don't know that that operator has that specific technology, so.
Yeah, I think we're just trying to see how we can mitigate the sound between those, those hours that people are usually asleep, you know, and still be respectful of the 24 hours that you can stay operating.
Understood. I'm happy with, with that technology language alternative after 10, so would 10 to...
10 to six, seven?
Seven.
10, yeah.
10 to seven. I don't think anybody objected to that. And again, I think majority of the trucking system, market is moving into that direction to begin with, from what I've seen.
It's acceptable.
Yeah. I think everybody, because everybody respects the need to move on in business and how things are developing. I think that isn't the issue, and we all have to, you know, we all understand that's happening even in our own neighborhoods. But just kind of trying to find a middle ground that we can work together, where you have so many people that are already, you know, living there, you know, and as well for your businesses to be able to keep moving. Because the development overall, the fact that it is, you know, recycling does help all of us, right, in the long run, so.
And it's not restricting their ability to market it with what we're asking. So that shouldn't affect the developers' interest at all as well.
Correct, not at all.
Understanding what the zoning already is in place.
Correct.
And what Mark's asking for, with giving up a couple of feet there, I don't think is really, and you're really not giving anything up, really, as a whole. Just enhance, enhance the landscape up front and then add the sound panels on the back of that wall and extend it around like you said you would.
That's fair enough, yeah, absolutely.
It seems reasonable.
Okay. Okay, just so I can clarify, so we're going to ensure that we have the 12-foot wall at the southeast corner, running from there to cover the loading area and the maneuvering area, along with the sound...
Panels.
Panels on that wall. And then, in an agreement for some sort of alternative means for the vehicles when they back up, not to make the sound, but use some other alternative...
Between 10 and 7.
Yeah, between 10, 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And then I think you also mentioned a three-foot berm and additional vegetation.
No.
They said that's included.
We have a conditional...
That was already in there.
Do you, but right now, it's like the undulating, right?
Correct.
Would it be better to just have it three foot across?
Three, I think it was an average of two and a half feet. And two and a half feet worked with, but we had to put in a retaining wall to do that because of the dried detention, so.
So what's the difference of three feet, then?
It just, it's just a higher retaining wall. So again, that's just what the engineers had analyzed.
We can, maybe what we can do is get some details between now and the January 11 BCC with the agent, so we can make sure that we're putting in an appropriate condition.
Just want to make sure it works, yeah.
Yeah, and that it works. And then maybe we'll also look at the eastern property line to make sure that we have, maybe in the area where the water body is versus the northern portion. Okay.
I think another point that was, an excellent point that was brought up, is if the plant material could be started at the beginning of the, of the construction, give it a chance to, to grow.
Yep. So, yeah, we can work on that. Obviously, when you're doing the construction, sometimes the plant material dies.
Yeah, and they got to get irrigation. Water, irrigation is part of it.
But they're right, you're right by canal.
Yes, just put a pump in.
Isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they can figure that out. That's been done before. We have a lot of conditions where we have to do all the perimeter, so we can, we can make do with this. And if we lose some trees, they'll put, they'll have to replace them through the...[1748.33] And if we lose some trees, they'll put, they'll have to replace them through the-
Stick a generator out there and a hose in the canal, and boom, you're done.
Yeah, yeah, they'll, they'll water truck it.
Well, they have temporary power there. They don't need to put it in there.
Okay.
Chair, you make the motion.
Motion to recommend approval of a development order amendment to reconfigure the site plan to add square footage at a use, add access points, and to modify or delete conditions of approval, subject to the conditions of approval, as indicated in Exhibit C-one and as amended today?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Caliendo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recommend approval of a Class A conditional use to allow a single use exceeding one-hundred thousand square feet for a warehouse, subject to the conditions of approval, as indicated in Exhibit C-two.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Caliendo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
And you have those additional things in the, in your notes.
And thank you, thank you to those, the public that came to speak. That's what happens when you come and exercise. You're right, right? Okay, do we have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Happy holidays.
Motion, motion to reset the clock to nine, back an hour.
Yep, and have a safe and happy holidays, whichever holiday it is that you celebrate. And let's hope for a great twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.